It is seven o'clock, it's time to start our meeting tonight, Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Hauser, Mr. Libudis.
Here.
Mr. Marmy.
Present.
Mr. Neely.
Here.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Barker.
Here.
Ms. Blind.
Present.
Mr. Shu.
Oh, for a second.
He's here.
He's here.
What he got?
Yeah.
You have all got.
Okay, there he is.
There he is.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Okay, would you like to stand for the invocation by Ms. Blind, and your police remain standing in front of the bridge?
Lord, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you that we can come and convene and listen. Lord, give us discernment, Lord. We need your wisdom, we ask for that more than anything else tonight, Father. Help us to do your will. God, give us courage. Give us courage, Lord. Lord, we pray for our safety forces. Lord, help them to see in the dark as it were, Lord. Give them the discernment and wisdom needed, Lord, to patrol and keep our streets safe. We pray for the rest of our EMS forces on fire and emergency staff, God, that you can keep them safe as well as they seek to save lives. God, thank you for this city. Help us to be good residents and good neighbors. In Jesus' name.
Please draw me in. Rachel. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation.
Uh, next up is caucus, do we have anything for caucus? Mr. President, Mr. Marmy, make a motion to excuse Mr. Hauser.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker, on favor say aye.
Aye.
All aye, same sign, it passes. Anything else for caucus?
Yes, Mr. President.
Sure.
Um, I'd like to invoke Rule eleven on Resolution twenty-five dash fifty-four with the minority leader's approval.
He read it.
Okay. All right, Amy, would you read twenty-five dash fifty-four?
Resolution number twenty-five dash fifty-four by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Libudis. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service for the City of Newark, Ohio, to enter into a lease agreement with Park National Bank for the lease purchase of one medic unit for the division of fire and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading twenty-five dash fifty-four, what is your wish? Mr. President. Mr. Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash fifty-four.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Cost. Do we have any discussion? Mr. President. Mr. Marmy.
Uh, to explain kind of what's going on here, uh, these are for medic units, uh, the lease agreement. These were the ones that were ordered like two years ago, we passed legislation approving that. Um, however, because time had lapsed and we're also gonna change the length of the term from four years to five years. Uh, they asked that we have new legislation, so this is not anything new, it's just we're, we're giving them new legislation in order to go ahead and approve the, uh, the different bond.
So, any other discussion? Okay, Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Hauser, Mr. Libudis.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shu.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Twenty-five dash fifty-four passes nine zero. Do we have anything else before caucus?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy.
I also, um, since I was on the prevailing side of twenty-five dash eighteen, I would like to invoke Rule twenty-one and reconsider ordinance twenty-five dash eighteen.
A motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Cost. Uh, Amy, would you like to read twenty-five dash eighteen?
Resolution number twenty-five dash eighteen by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Barker, Ms. Libudis, Mr. Raff, Ms. Blind. An ordinance amending portions of the current articles of the zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio, adopted May fifth, two thousand nine by ordinance eight dash thirty-three A, and September fifth, twenty twenty-three by ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two A, and September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four by ordinance twenty-four dash eighteen A, implementing additional articles of the zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
Heard the reading twenty-five dash eighteen, what is your wish? Mr. President. Mr. Marmy.
Um, I, I need to explain kind of what happened here, we sent this through, uh, this body, uh, passed this legislation, however, uh, we missed a step, it needs to go through Planning Commission. So what we're gonna do is we are going to table this in order to send it to Planning Commission. When it comes back from Planning Commission, we'll be able to take it off the table and do a public hearing on that same night. But it isn't anything, nothing's changing on it, we just need to go back and connect the dots with a few more steps. So I would like to make a motion to table ordinance twenty-five dash eighteen.
So, point of order, we do need a vote on the motion to read.
Oh, okay, sorry, yes, okay. So, um, we're gonna vote, what do you say?
To approve the motion.
Yeah, to approve the motion. So I got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Cost, and go ahead, Amy, please read the.
Mr. Hauser, Mr. Libudis.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shu.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Okay, that passes nine zero now. We have a motion to table from Mr. Marmy to table, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Cost, do we have any other discussion about table? And Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Hauser, Mr. Libudis.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shu.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yep. Twenty-five dash eighteen has been taken. Uh, next on the agenda is business from the July twenty-first meeting, twenty twenty-five, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Libudis. Second. Second by Mr. Barker, on favor say aye. Aye. All aye, same sign, it passes nine zero, next up, appointments. None, uh, reports of standing committees, finance service without objection will be received and filed. Uh, reports from city officials, there's none tonight. Uh, communication, Trish Berry, eleventh yearly international overdose prevention rally, August twenty-eighth from five P M with seven at thirty-six Canal Market Street. Next up is a public hearing, twenty-five dash seventeen, Amy, please read the public hearing.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash seventeen by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Marmy, Ms. Blind, Mr. Libudis. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain rural property generally described as one seventy Obannon Avenue, City of Newark, looking County, Ohio, parcel tax ID number zero five four dash one nine eight three nine zero dash zero zero dot zero zero zero, and parcel tax ID number zero five four dash one nine eight three nine six dash zero zero dot zero 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 from that of L C Limited Commercial Zoning District to L I Limited Industrial Zoning District, zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
Okay, so down to public hearing, we're gonna open the public hearing, is anybody here to speak for or against twenty-five dash seventeen? Anybody? Okay, we're gonna close this public hearing, Amy, please redo again.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash seventeen by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Marmy, Ms. Blind, Mr. Libudis. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain rural property generally described as one seventy Obannon Avenue, City of Newark, looking County, Ohio, parcel tax ID number zero five four dash one nine eight three nine zero dash zero zero dot zero zero zero, parcel tax ID number zero five four dash one nine eight three nine six dash zero zero dot zero 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 from that of L C Limited Commercial Zoning District to L I Limited Industrial Zoning District, zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
Heard the reading twenty-five dash seventeen, what is your wish, Mr. President? Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt twenty-five dash seventeen.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Raff, second by Ms. Blind, do we have any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Yeah, this has been approved and recommended by the Planning Commission, and, uh, for that reason, I'll be supporting it, I'll encourage everybody else to as well.
Any other discussion? Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Hauser, Mr. Libudis.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shu.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Twenty-five dash seventeen passes nine zero, next up is comments from citizens, this is your opportunity to come, speak what's on your mind, and ask you to give your name and address, and keep your minute, your comments about three minutes, do we have anybody tonight, Mr. Brenner, come on.
Hello, Brenner, four nineteen South Side Street, York. What I'm here for, uh, we got the issues with the mini mikes in the south end still. Okay, I was told by Tricia Moore, and also by Doug Marmy, the only way you could take care of us, call, 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 I got twelve calls on my phone in two weeks. And they're still running the streets down here, I almost hit one in the national drive and, uh, second street coming here tonight because he cut across in front of me. Somebody's gonna get seriously hurt, we need to take it serious. It needs to stop. Then the other day, I came to the zoning meeting the other night on the Roost on the River. Okay. He had much pizza here. After the meeting, some people were leaving, and they're being harassed by him and his people. That shouldn't happen. We need to have maybe security or somebody there to keep an eye on the situation, because he's very unhappy about the whole situation. And then we got, uh, Planning Commission coming up. Now I'm sure it's gonna end up being the same way. We, the residents of the south end, shouldn't have to put up with his nonsense. That's all I have to say, thank you, thank you.
Ambassador like to speak, ma'am? Just give me your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening, um, Jane Gavall, two, what, two-six Camry Street, Newark. Um, I'm gonna sound almost like that gentleman, uh, I'm here with several of my neighbors, uh, to hopefully awaken the urgency of closing down our neighborhood light at two forty-nine Camry Street. Uh, for five years, the surrounding families are affected by broken laws, drug sales, abuse, thefts, radical hatred all hours of night, and most of all, living with the fear of repercussion if they attempt to rid the house of vagrants, homeless criminals who blatantly display their stolen articles through all the city. We now have five drug theft homes in a three-block area, my neighborhood. Law enforcement of several branches are well aware of the problem. Unfortunately, without visual proof that they are working to help us, the residents are angry, frustrated. So they find themselves wondering, what's the point? Uh, of having laws that protect the rights of lawbreakers and strangle the path of law and order. Folks, we have multiple homes, not just in our neighborhood, but the entire city where drugs, that prostitution runs rampant as they laugh at us, knowing that nothing will be done, so my question is, why aren't you, when are you going to cure the cancer that has gripped our city? Obviously, we're not the only ones with major problems.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Come on.
Rochelle Holden Smith, two thirty-seven by La Court. On this weekend, we had Pelotonia, which is a moralist event, um, that earns a lot of money for, um, cancer research and that sort of thing, um. Uh, again with the, the bike problem, I, I would like to suggest that the city, um, work with the advocate, um, and maybe the dispatch to, um, refresh people on what the law is in terms of bikes, um, this weekend during Pelotonia, I saw an awful lot of people um, that were not part of that ride, um, riding on sidewalks, um, including motorcycles, which is, just crazy. Um, something needs to be done, it's not that big a problem in terms of how to solve it. Um, I, I think it's a simply matter of communication, people don't know what side of the street to do it. Um, and, uh, um, it's a danger to pedestrians, pedestrians as, as well as the bicyclists. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else at this time? Okay, next up is the ordinance on the second reading, there are none this meeting, ordinance on the first reading, there are none this meeting. Resolutions on the second reading, twenty-five dash forty-seven.
Resolution number twenty-five dash forty-seven by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Raff, Mr. Libudis, Ms. Blind. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Heard the reading twenty-five dash forty-seven, what is your wish? Mr. President. Mr. Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash forty-seven, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker, do we have any discussion? Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Hauser, Mr. Libudis.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shu.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Twenty-five dash forty-seven passes nine zero, next up is resolutions on the first reading, twenty-five dash forty-nine.
Resolution number twenty-five dash forty-nine by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Ms. Blind, Mr. Libudis. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Twenty-five dash forty-nine will be held until our next meeting, which will be Monday, August the eighteenth. And the last one tonight is, uh, Resolution twenty-five dash fifty.
Resolution number twenty-five dash fifty by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Barker, Ms. Blind, Mr. Libudis. A resolution of intent to appropriate real estate being a part of Outlot Five as shown on the plot of property of the Simplicity Foundry and Engineering Company, nineteen thirty-five, and last conveyed and reported at volume four eighty-one, page fifty-seven of deed records, Looking County. A resentment of a deficient bridge on Riverside Drive over long pond run, which provides access to Owens Corning Manufacturing Plant within the City of Newark, Ohio, authorizing the mayor to give notice to the owner of such lands as required by law and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading at twenty-five dash fifty, which is emergency, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt twenty-five dash fifty.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Raff, second by Ms. Blind, do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Uh, the reason we're doing this, it's a very small piece of land, it is being, uh, constructed to the completion of the bridge project. Uh, we understand that the, uh, owner is deceased, and it's a formality. So we can get the project going, that's why there's a difference.
Any other discussion? Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Hauser, Mr. Libudis.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shu.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yep.
Twenty-five dash fifty passes nine zero. That completes our ordinance and resolutions tonight. Next up is comments for citizens, your last opportunity, we have anybody? City officials? Come on.
Yes, good evening, everyone, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for the record, my name is Mark Mauder, I'm the City of Newark's Community and Economic Development Director. I've come before you tonight with my community development hat on, uh, to talk to you a little bit about a lead hazard control grant, City five four, and was awarded, it's a three point six million dollars lead hazard control grant. I gave you a copy of the pamphlet that I'm holding in my hand. Uh, we put this together to use as an informational piece, to get the word out to the citizens of Newark, uh, that we have these funds available, um, lead is a very serious issue. Uh, up until nineteen seventy-eight, lead was put into paint to provide durability. But it also is a health hazard, it's a poison actually to children, especially children six years and under, and also to pregnant women if they would become exposed to lead. Um, the pamphlet you open up, it tells you where lead could be found in the home, it can be found in the paint, which could be on your windows, your doors, your siding, um, any surface where you might apply paint to, it could also be in your plumbing fixtures, in your plumbing pipes. So this brochure section tells you how to identify it there. The next part in the program is lead is a poison, like I mentioned a moment ago. It's very dangerous to young children, and that's one of the priorities that we'll put is for families who do have young children. Or maybe it's grandparents who are watching young children during the day in their home, and that handle may have, uh, lead in their paint. So, how do you test a child? Talks about that, you go to your pediatrician, they get tested, and they take a blood sample, and they examine that sample to see if lead is present in the bloodstream. The next section talks about, does my home have lead hazards? And this addresses that through the City of Newark's Lead Hazard Control Program, low-income families with both owner-occupied and or rental properties, they're both qualified, which I think is, is great. That way we are not excluding anyone from taking advantage of this program. Um, an evaluation would be done through our department to examine the homes as well. The next session is titled Controlling Lead Hazards in the Home. And this Lead Hazard Control Program will review the results of the testing that the city will conduct. And then we'll develop a work plan on how to identify the lead hazards. So, you can turn the page then, once you identify the hazards, well then, how do I qualify to take advantage of this great lead program to help, help citizens of Newark? And it addresses that, uh, in that section right there, and it's available to low, to moderate income homeowners and or rental property owners, priority is given to children who have, priority is given to homeowners who have children, uh, six years of, but it's not exclusive to that. And then there's a session on project eligibility, um, we will focus on the areas where the older housing stock is, so think of the downtown area and just beyond the downtown area, where the homes are older and actually have more potential to have that lead in on their home projects. So, the entire city of Newark though will fall within what we call our target area, so we're not just, we're not just in this central district of the downtown, this is an entire city target area. And lastly, the lead hazard control program is a cooperative effort, I think this is great, we do such a good job in the City of Newark, working together. And my department is linking up with the property maintenance department, we're working with the Looking County Health Department, we're working with the Leeds Community Action Agency, and, um, so we'll all be working together to administer this program. I think it's one of the best grant programs I've seen in fourteen years I've been here. Not only is it a health concern that we can address, but it also quite honestly becomes a beautification project. And people get new windows, doors, and siding on the exterior of their home. That has, that has a positive effect in names, I think it also creates a ripple effect, where other neighbors also then take interest, maybe invest in their property a little bit more, but again, we're very proud to receive this, we've worked hard, we're, there's a lot of competition, and you get a three point six million dollar grant from the City of Newark, uh, we're, I'm very pleased to report that to all of you, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And if anybody else would like a pamphlet on this, I have differing excerpts, so see me after the meeting, thank you.
Any other city officials? Law director?
Thank you, um, the citizens who came in today, you're doing exactly what you need to do. I know, don't stop, don't give up, um, keep reporting, um, anything that you see that is suspicious activity, and that's, that's what that line is for, so keep reporting, uh, there are ears in this room that, that can help, uh, should, you're doing what you need to do, Agent, without a doubt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, uh, thanks, uh, we had a pretty busy Saturday in this town, and, uh, Pelotonia came through, uh, in the morning, and for those that were, uh, knew about it or not, the sixty-five mile ride, the hundred mile ride, those came through Newark, um, I'll give, uh, great thanks to the Police Department that did its phenomenal job, uh, all hands on deck that day, and of course they covered all the intersections as you come in through town to make it a great safe ride for the riders, uh, several hundred, I think it was maybe seven hundred and fifty riders. Uh, for those of you that weren't in that ride, um, and they went east of town here, they went up the Big Hill on Obannon on the way to Kenyon College, and we had some people that did a hundred miles, uh, on Saturday, and then they came back and did ninety more on Sunday. So, uh, they stayed in Kenyon, they didn't come back to Newark, but they did the north side, so, uh, kudos, obviously a huge fundraiser to help fight cancer, uh, and work in the plum area, it's been phenomenal, but, uh, uh, did a wonderful job in this city, and then followed by the Summer Fest concert downtown. Uh, police, uh, regrouped and came downtown after that, and provided a good safe environment, uh, for outdoor music, and, uh, uh, enjoyed the time, the weather was very cooperative, and we appreciate that, and I'm sure the riders did too in Pelotonia, so that I want to thank everybody that takes a lot of months and a lot of planning, and, uh, I would just tell you, especially Pelotonia, that takes a long time. But even, uh, Summer Fest took quite a long time to book it all and get it thing going, so kudos, everybody that had that on the radar and made that successful, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Libudis.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I'd like to thank the, uh, constituents and members that came out to give us information on, uh, each of your areas and things that are happening in that, in that area, so as Law Director said, there's some ears in the room, might be able to help with that. So thanks for coming and sharing that, uh, I'd also like to, uh, so I was thankful to be able to attend the Charles Noble, Reverend Charles Noble, uh, street dedication on Friday evening, uh, it was a great event, a couple of us were able to make it, and, uh, it's a very nice event, and honor the man that has done a lot for, obviously not only Newark and Lincoln County, but, uh, all across the country, so it's great to honor him, that I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President, need to call Finance Committee meeting for the eighteenth, and that I will pass.
Mr. Neely.
Uh, thank you. I will pass.
Mr. Raff?
Thank you, I called Service Committee meeting for the eighteenth, uh, just wanted to say I was down here Saturday for the Summer Fest and, and, uh, was around pretty honoring of the hometown heroes, uh, that was a great, great event. Um, local heroes being honored, it's awesome. Mark, congratulations on the grant, uh, it's awesome work. Uh, also, I wanted to remind people, along that same topic as far as lead poisoning goes, uh, all of our galvanized water service lines are being symptomatically being placed throughout the city, that is at no cost to the residents. Please go to the Water Department and register to allow them to do that, um. If you don't register, they're still knocking your door and trying to catch you at home. Uh, but it makes our job a whole lot easier to just register ahead of time and get permission to do that. Uh, and that is a, a great project, and obviously a very fast project, uh. So your cooperation will be appreciated, so that I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff, Mr. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass that.
Mr. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass as well.
Ms. Blind?
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. Um, on Saturday, South Newark residents gave new beginnings, a helping hand, who was much needed. Uh, the great thing was I didn't have to ask, I showed up and people came out, and we all jumped in, and what would have been an all-day project took just half the day, and so, and it was great, they did it, they did a fine job, and last week, continuing, uh, neighbors from Jefferson and West Main joined Basic Tree Service in just the first steps of rebuilding the old canal lock that's on West Main Street. Um, this has been a dream of mine for a long time, we were able to take down twelve trees and, and move some of the locks that had been, uh, sadly excavated from their historic sites. But we were able to preserve them and move them to the front where we hope that they'll be preserved as being out in the open, so they did a great job, and, and that is too, in a way, uh, heading to begin. Now, I'm really glad you all came this night, I appreciate it. This Jane, your letter was good, was great, and to the point, and I appreciate it. This is a twenty-four seven job, collecting data, collecting photos, collecting information, and it's frustrating, and you're spear in it, and it's heavy, it's true. I encourage the residents, keep in communication with our police. What can we do better, what can we do next? I think next is the best word, as we're all sending in testimony of what we're seeing, we're sending in photos, we're sending in film, we're calling the police. It's been five years at the one side. And so what is a functioning step that we can help as residents in this process? And to their point, there are, they, uh, as business, drugs are business, and as good businessmen, and they are expanding. And so, again, I, I would appreciate our officers, they're, they're very good at what they do, but help us with the strategy of what we can do next. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blind, Mr. Shu.
Thank you, Mr. President, I will pass.
Mr. Cost.
I had the honor to attend the recognition for Reverend Noble, the renaming of Washington Street in his name. And sadly had the, uh, And sadly had the honor to attend the funeral for former, uh, County Commissioner Don Hale. These are two men that I greatly admire. They were the definition of public service. Uh, also a great afternoon and evening as to hear it fast. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Um, I'd like to thank everyone that came out to the Reverend Noble, um, ceremony. It was a great evening. Uh, the family was very appreciative for what we did for their father. Um, I'm not sure they realized, um, you know, what we were gonna do and they were just overjoyed. Um, they had a daughter, one of the daughters came in from Nashville and she, she didn't really realize how big of an event it was going to be. So it was, it was a good event. So thank you, everybody for that. Our next meeting is August the 18th already. And, uh, school will be in session. So start watching the school buses, you know, paying school all and watch the kids. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Cost?
Second.
Good lord, second by Mr. Labutus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.